Call this board meeting to order. Ask Mr. Davidson to lead us in our prayer and pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Father, we're grateful for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us today. Father, guide us and direct us in the meeting tonight as we conduct the business of the Board of Education for Wayne County. We pray for our students, teachers, and administrators, and we ask for forgiveness of sin, and we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the mission of liberty and justice for all.
Mission statement for Wayne County School System. Our mission is to empower all students to reach their highest levels of achievement. Our vision is in partnership with the community, the Wayne County School System will be a progressive system where all students acquire the knowledge and skills to be productive, responsible, and successful citizens in a rapidly changing world. Our belief is every person has the right to learn and work in a safe, nurturing environment.
Motion to adopt agenda?
I say move.
Move to second. Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Motion to approve the minutes from the August fourteenth and August twenty-first meeting.
That's a move.
Thank you.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am. Into our public participation, first we have Ms. Carolyn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just come as a concerned citizen, and I want you to know I'm not trying to start no racial outrage or anything that concern, but I am a concerned citizen about our students. I noticed that in the paper I've been keeping up with that you hired and changed and made some changes and some moves in administration. And that's great that you can do that, but I do know also that you have eight public school systems in this county. We have one minority principal. We have twelve assistant principals, you have two. I don't think that we're serving our children, minority students, in the way that they need to be served. They need to see somebody within their system that they can go to and ask questions about community events or just in general. These children are coming from some bad situations, and if you don't have research to show that you need to have somebody that these children can go to if they're going to be successful. And with the rate that we're going, we've been going through this how many, I don't know. We need to get, do a better job with minorities in the school system. We can give them cheer and encouragement on the football field, and then they walk in on Monday and can't see any, don't get any support. And I think as a board, we gonna have to develop if we want these children to succeed. You had an all-time low in minority test score, they're not gonna get any better if we don't start seeing minorities within the school system. At all the schools, we're in the front office, we have none in those schools. Don't have a secretary, we don't have a clerk, you have absolutely none. And in the year of two thousand, that is ultimately ridiculous. Minority children cannot see their own kind doing something successful. So my question is, do y'all not think it's important, or what are we gonna do about this? Because this is just, we're losing our children every day. And simply because they're not having the support that they need to have on the inner run of a day. School is an extension of home. So they should be able to go to school and find somebody that can say, hey, what's going on in the community, and let me tell you the problem that we're having in the community. Can you give me some advice as to what we can do? They can't do that because they don't have minorities in the school system to go to with those type of questions. And I'm just saying, I just hope that we can reconsider or we can start doing better by our children so that we can keep them off the street, so we can, we won't save them off. But if we had somebody in the system that they could go to, or say, hey, I've been there. I know what that's like. Then maybe we can save more than we lose. Test scores may even improve. But it is contemptuous that a county this big doesn't only have one minority principal.
Ms. Carolyn, how many do you think we should have?
It's not a number, I just think that the kids should see at least someone, at least something at the school. It doesn't have to be administrative, it could be, when we walk into front office, I don't think it's one minority even in your school system, even in your front office. So who are these kids looking up to? Custodians and lunchroom people? That's not the message that we want to send to these children. That that's all you're capable of doing. So I'm just saying, I'm just asking and begging you, what is it that we got to get, the community have got to get the board to understand that this is important? These children are old, so if you would, just consider that. When you're putting these people into these places, at these school systems, that you're trying to find some minorities to help these children so they can see that there's a better way. You know, that's all I'm asking, just consider that. If you need a committee to go out and try to find something, let's get that done. I'm not saying it has to be equal, whatever, but it should have somebody that they can go to in the school system. You walk in the front office, you can't see not one minority in any of these front offices? The clerk, the secretary, computer operator? None of them. And that's just not the way that we need to continue to do. So just think about that when you're hiring these people. And if you need some help with trying to help find somebody, let's get a committee, let's get something going for the betterment of, so we can meet the social and emotional need of these children. Because they're coming from a situation that's not good at home, so they need to have at least school is an extension of home. They need to be able to have somebody to say, it is wrong that you can make it because I made it. I thank you for your time, and anytime you need me to help you with that, I can help you find somebody.
And for those who do not know this, this is Coach Carolyn Kelly. She is a retired educator of thirty years, a former Liberty County School System Teacher of the Year. So she-
She is a graduate from Wayne-
Yeah, she is a Wayne County graduate as well. That's right. Former basketball player, Wayne County graduate, that's who just spoke to us.
Mr. Bill, question two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to hear this cotton, so in case I skip something to that. Topic is school board concerns. Number one on my list is transparency. I think the school board need, well, more transparency is needed. Sidewalk issue at Martha Ross Smith Elementary School is a fine example of where there was lack of transparency. No one wants to own up to the reason why we don't have it, but someone should be held responsible or accountable for the lack of safety requirements and infrastructure needs. The school is two years old and lacked those requirements that should have been done during the construction of the school. Also, more lighting on that road in that curb is also needed. From my vantage point, I see the board as more reactive and not proactive. A proactive approach is what works best. As a board, you should know what's needed and prioritize those needs to get them filled. Beat the bushes and see what's needed. It appears that some wants are given more priority than needs. A prime example is, well, I don't want to throw anybody on the bus, but I heard talk of a gym, I mean, a weight room, is that really needed? You might want it, but I don't think you need it. I think you need buses and band instruments, or do you need another weight room? I've heard pleas for help in getting a band equipment. What's the plan? Is that even being considered? Since those pleas were heard, it's been dead silence. The board needs to address this. The band equipment, transport vehicle, from what I heard from the band director, he was here a few months ago, has over a million miles on it and has to be followed by a tow truck. This seems like a dire need. How many buses did we purchase this year? This type of information, I think the public needs to know. In addition to teacher and administrator's salaries, where are the funds going? Beast plots. I highly recommend approval of this initiative. Questions that I have are, how much did we collect from the last one? Where do those funds go? What were they used for? In addition to the bacon project, what else is being proposed? Let us see the list. You have a budget discussion periodically, and I think that the, it was a great presentation, but I think it's too small, it's hard to follow. How about giving copies to the attendees so we can also see what you're talking about? Hey, if you need somebody to support, you will pay the board cartridges, I'll be very happy to help you with that. You are the custodians of funds. Let us see how the financial status. You have the school facilities report that show revenue that's being generated by rental property. I would also like to see a copy of that before. I never see that on the financial report. If you want us to continue to help participate in helping with the keeping the duty and the good health, let us see where the funds are being used. I think we're all in this together. School safety. You spoke about resource officers. Do you plan to bring in a security expert to make an assessment of what's needed at schools? I heard talk about two officers, and we have eight schools. I think the board mentioned just the two that I just mentioned. Will state provide financial assistance to the county for that? Has law enforcement given us an estimate, meaning the city police, sheriff's department? Are there private contractors out there? Some of the questions I have on school security. Personally, sometimes I feel insulated from what's being discussed at board meetings. There should be another forum for public input other than a five-minute rant, which I'm on right now. How about a town hall meeting to hear all the concerns of all our citizens? Thank you, Father. Thank you for your time.
Roseanne, question two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Hutchinson spoke about leased properties and all that stuff, and I have one request. I am requesting a use of facility report for the last nine days. I want to know whose rented property, whether it's a gym, cafeteria, whatever, what they're paying. I'd like to know if it's gonna cost anything for a report, and then I want to know how long it's gonna take for you to get the report together. Who's renting property and what they're paying. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Resolutions and recognitions. Yes, at this time, Dr. Preston's gonna recognize some leaders in this school that earned an award from the governor's office.
We'd like to recognize these leaders in our school for being awarded the Bronze Level of Governor's Shape Honor Roll. Georgia Shape is the governor's statewide multi-agency and local functional initiative that brings together government, philanthropic, academic, and business communities to address childhood obesity in Georgia. Over the next ten years, Georgia will shape work towards increasing the number of students in healthy, fitness zone for body mass index by ten percent. Other initiatives set forth by the governor, Governor Georgia Shape, include reaching disparate populations, increasing the aerobic capacity measure of Georgia's youth by increasing the number of early care centers that excel in nutrition, physical activity measures. And I just wanted to recognize these ladies for being leaders in our school and our school system. Ms. Athena Tyre. Ms. Lori Smith, our school nurse. Okay, our athletic director, Sheila Brockton. Ms. Tyre is our nutrition director of the school. Healthy Powers is very proud of you three for the school community and all of the hard work that you put into last year. Let the great things coming, this coming up here. Thank you.
All right, this time, I'm not sure who's running, Ms. Jern and several other teachers. Ms. Terry has some students I want to recognize, some of our leaders from the school. Had a summer program you want to tell us about.
Hey, everybody, we are here to recognize our faculty job leadership programs. This program started three years ago at this point, and as you can see, our mission is to provide students with positive leadership experiences while enhancing skills, improving academic abilities, and embracing community service opportunities. We try each year to add something new and make our program better, and we focus on every content area and working on skills that make you get lost in the day-to-day of school, such as shaking somebody's hand, look them in the eye, say thank you, I mean, those types of things that kind of go by the wayside sometimes. So we just want to recognize these students. But first, we would like for Henry Kelly to kind of come give you the student's perspective. And Cassie Jackson.
Hi, I'm Henry Kelly. I am a third year, or a third year, just been on the Jack Jack program. When I started, I started right out of my eighth grade year, leading into my ninth grade year of being a freshman at Wayne County High. At the beginning, I wasn't able to socialize with a lot of people, I wasn't able to come out of my shell and talk to people, let alone in front of a big room. I had trouble speaking out of class, presenting, I was never able to reach someone. I was never able to reach someone in my face while talking to them. I was always looking down or avoiding eye contact. But with the help of the Jack Jack program, teaching us soft skills, how to present ourselves to people, how to introduce ourselves properly, I was able to, now that I'm out of my shell, help other students come out of their shells and to show them how to become leaders in today's society and leaders in the school system as it is. The program on its own is a perfect and wonderful program that for coming up ninth graders and even seniors who are about to graduate, it's a great program to get into considering it helps you with soft skills, communication, it helps you with academics, and it helps you make it clear you don't have to, you have people that you can rely on whenever you get into high school, people that can show you around, people that you can go to for advice. It gives you an opportunity to be, where teachers who are there for you, that you go and ask questions or that you can go to if you need to talk to them about personal things going on. And make sure you have friends going into high school, if you're from a different county or so, that you can come into the program. We had a member named Kyle. I can't pronounce his name, people have little names. Oh, Kyle, no, sorry. He came in, he was barely able to talk to other students, talk to teachers. He was a basic person, he was in his shell a lot. After that first summer that he joined us, he was able to talk to people, communicate with teachers, to present in front of class. They made a huge impact on him, they made an impact on all of us. It also helped with, this year, the Jack Jack program added culinaries. It added a nutrition program a year before, which helps us get back to community, whether it's fix sandwiches for kids who don't have the privilege or are lacking in resources, so to speak. During the summer, it helps us to be able to get back to community, helps us to have skills that not a lot of freshmen or let alone upperclassmen have, such as being able to talk, introduce yourself, carry a conversation, defend for yourself with basic skills that most people should already know, cooking for themselves, helping in class, helping out with others. All around, it's a great program to have at school. I'm glad you've been able to be invited into it three years ago, and I hope to see it flourish later on. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Cassie Jackson. She's one of our three-year students, she come on board very first year? First year. Cassie graduated in May, and she come back over the summer because we invited our seniors back, since they're technically still ours since August. And we work on some life skills, how to budget, how to manage money. And Cassie's gonna speak to you as a graduate of not only the Jackie Job program, but also as a graduate and current college student. She is enrolled at Coastal Hines Tech College, and we're proud of her, we're proud of how far she's come, so.
My name is Cassie Jackson. I just recently graduated in May, like I said. I'm on my second week of college, and boy, it is warm. I'm taking four college classes right now. I actually have a class at six-thirty tonight, and I don't think it opens until nine. So being a Jackie Job prepared me for the struggles, I guess, that you go through in college, adjusting-wise. It also helped me realize that even though I'm going on to college, I can always depend on these teachers to help me out, and it was overall a really good experience. Being in the program for three years, I got to see a lot of faces and get to know a lot of people. It was just really, overall, a really good experience, and I'm very grateful. And I know that if I ever need help in biology, Ms. Jern will pop me up. But yeah, I'm really appreciative to all you guys, and I'll be keeping in contact. Thank you.
We're gonna recognize our completers right now, our first-year completers. Alexandria- Yeah, do you want us to stay here until the end? Okay, if you guys will stay here afterwards, we can do.
There's a few people that aren't here, but we told them to be recognized, so we're gonna call them all out and everything.
Alexandria Spelman. Anthony Taylor. Ashton Gardner. Britten Williamson. Dixie Hatton. Eric Barrett. Evan Wendell. Hayden Manning. Jalen Merritt. Matthew Williams. Nicola Gaines. Natalia Black. Nathan Knowles. Nicholas Chadwick Turner. Ryan Smith. Samuel Taylor. Grace Griffin. Tamisha Chadwick Turner. Trevion Guyton. Tyler Conns. Our second-year completers. Charlie Whitley, I believe she's at Rite of Practice. Dalton Cooper. Jeffrey Blackman. Adria Spelman. Delasia Fullmore. Tamoria Pittman. Tony Strickland. These are our three-year completers. These guys started with us, they ran the first-year gamut as we tried to introduce something new to them that was new to us. So Emily Conti. Henry Kelly. And Tamia Pittman. Every year, we say the same thing. Every year, we say that these guys- Alex Francis. It's okay, you're gonna hold it. I'll get your certificate. Every year, we say the same thing. Every year, we say how much this program blesses us and these kids. We making a point to look them out, see how their day's going, see how their time's going, see how their classes are going. Sometimes they feel like retarded, like, you are seeking us out again. But they know it's because we love them, they know it's because we care, and they know that they can come to us, they do. If they had a problem at school, they'll bump one of us up, and we'll help them out. They know that we have their back, and that we care and we love them. So thank you, guys, thank you, board, thank you, Dr. McDaniel, thank you, Kim, for supporting this. The kids enjoy it, and we enjoy the kids.
All right, Swoosh and Betty.
Swoosh.
Swoosh and Betty.
I just want to say to the young man that spoke, that was awesome.
I just wanna say to the young man that spoke, uh, that was awesome. That was awesome.
All right, this time it's Amy Danny's prepared some, uh, assessment data for us. Just kind of a big overview of the entire system unless we match up as far as rankings in our RISA. That's something we've kept up with throughout the years, just that's our surrounding, uh, camps.
Are you back row folks back there? Um, so as most of you know, our, um, assessment system in Georgia is called the Georgia Milestones Assessment System and it has two big sections. It has the end-of-grade section, which is used to test students in third through eighth grade. Um, all students in third through eighth grade are tested in English Language Arts and Mathematics. And in fifth and eighth grade, we also test Science and Social Studies. In high school, the Georgia Milestones is called the End of Course Test and, um, there are eight different tests that we utilize in Wayne County. Ninth grade literature, American literature, um, Algebra One and Geometry, Biology and Physical Science, and Economics and U.S. History. And so this is just the big picture overview and there aren't little minute details in this presentation, but of course, we can provide that kind of information. So this is a big picture look and at the end, I'm gonna try to connect it to our district improvement plan that we have, um, prepared for this year. So this is the really big picture. These blue bars, um, are the eighteen school districts in our RISA. And in this bucket are the, all of the test scores, third grade through high school, all of the subject areas for all of these different counties. And you can see that Wayne County is right there. We are eight out of eighteen when you put all of the test scores from third grade through twelfth grade into one big bucket and compare those to the other seventeen districts in our RISA. Um, you can see that the overall trend for our state and our RISA and our county is a, um, upward trend and so we're excited about that. I'm gonna go through these next slides really quickly. I know that there's a lot of information on these pages and I'm going to hit the highlights. If you have questions, you're welcome to stop me. I've got a little slide at the end for questions, but I'm happy to have you stop me mid-presentation. Let me give you a little legend for how you can read this. You can see that on every slide, I'm going to, um, Wayne County's going to move around because I've got Wayne County highlighted in yellow and it's highlighted by our rank in First District RISA. Um, there are also some blue markings on the slides. If it's highlighted in blue, that means that we beat the state, that we beat the state average. Um, if it's highlighted in green, like here, it means that we moved up in our RISA rank from last year. And so, for example, on this one, this is third grade Language Arts, the percentage of students who are proficient or distinguished. Last year, we were ranked number five in the RISA. This year, we're ranked number four in the RISA. We really like to see growth like that. And sometimes when we give these RISA reports, it makes me think, um, that it's all about competing with our neighboring school districts. But this gives us, um, districts that are similar to us and demographic and oftentimes similar to us in size and it just gives us something to compare to. Um, sometimes in dealing with things like test scores, you need that comparison point. So, this is our third grade and in the first area here, this is the percent of students who are reading on grade level or above. And the benchmark here is that if a student is reading at the bottom of the Lexile stretch band, that means that they're reading on grade level or above. And you can see that, um, seventy-three point three percent of our third graders need that mark and we're ranked fourth in the district. We're also fourth in the district for ELA scores, the percent of students proficient and distinguished. And we're fifth in the RISA district for our third graders who are proficient or distinguished in mathematics. Fourth grade, um, and y'all, I should tell you that the reason I don't have any of last year's ranks on this first column is because the state didn't release that information like that last year and so they are providing a new report this year and so I was able to include it this year, but I don't have last year's numbers for that. You can say we're fifth in, yes.
Can I ask you just a quick, just simple question? I mean, this is for all the students in that county that is in the fourth grade?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not looking at the same population of schools, of, of Georgia. We're not looking at the same numbers. There's less fourth graders obviously in Wayne County than there would be in Camden County.
Right.
Or Grant, Bryan County, or Eppingham County, or Glen County.
Right.
So, so our students are really, really doing well to be in fourth?
Right, and these are percentages and so, you know, when you convert things to percentages, it does allow you to make those comparisons a little easier than if we were just looking at raw scores. Um, there, you know, still, but when you have a smaller number of students, um, and we, we deal with this in Wayne County all the time and looking at like our smaller schools, sometimes when we're talking about one percentage at Scriven Elementary, that's a kid or a couple kids.
My point is, is from a tax basis or looking at from money expenditure basis, we're doing, I mean, for the type, the amount of money we spend for education.
Yeah, we're really proud of a lot of these results that we have tonight.
Uh, Camden County, Bryan County, Eppingham County, Glen County has way more money than we have.
And, and when we talk about our RISA, those three districts that you just named, Camden, Bryan, and Eppingham, we consider them like the gold standard. They're all, you're gonna see them in the top three almost, almost consistently on these slides.
I think what he's trying to say, per student, the funds that we spend per student.
The funds, I see.
Yeah, uh, which will help our CCRPI score because it shows that we're having that growth with the money that, that you're using.
I agree.
Camden and O'Brien also get that federal impact money too for military stuff.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good thing too.
Um, there's a report that I can provide. It, it won't be this year's data, but prior years, um, per pupil expenditure for all of these counties, so, and I can bring that information to you at ordinary to show you what we're spending in pursuit of that district.
I think I have some of that now.
It's, it's, it's available to the public. It's not password protected or anything, so anybody can access that information, but if you want it in a report format or to some RISA, I can, I can provide that.
So we're really pleased with fourth grade. You'll notice over there in math that Wayne County is number three in the school dis, in the RISA district and so we actually beat one of those gold standard, um, districts, which we're really proud of. Um, here's our fifth grade. And I need to say this, you know, when we look at this year's rank and last year's rank, that is an apples-to-oranges comparison. That's not, you know, we're not looking at the same children. And so, oftentimes, and there's a slide later on that I'll show you, um, is, we really like to also look at cohorts of students because you wanna see that that cohort of students is growing, not just that when you're comparing that apples to oranges, you're growing. You wanna see growth all the way around, but you really wanna see growth within a cohort of students so that we know we're growing every child every day. Um, so this is just fifth grade, Language Arts, um, and Mathematics, and then of course, our percentage of students that are, um, reading on or above grade level. We had a few little dips in fifth grade, but if you look at last year's fourth grade scores, there was actually growth in that cohort of students. Here's our fifth grade, Science and Social Studies, and you can see that we're five and seven. I'm fifth in recent Science, seventh in Social Studies. We move up to our middle schools. Um, you can see that in sixth grade, we are beating the state average for the, um, number of students who are reading on or above grade level in sixth grade. And I'd be delighted to, to tell you this, little number up there shows what the state average is, so that just gives another little comparison. Sixth grade, um, moved up in RISA rank in both Language Arts and Mathematics. Seventh grade, um, where, we know that with this particular group of students, that we have a lot of work to do. And our middle schools are looking at different interventions to provide services to these students so that we can move these on a moving的步伐. Eighth grade has a lot of graphs because we teach some high school courses in eighth grade. Um, you can see that, um, we're kinda hanging there around number eight with the percentage of students reading on or above grade level in eighth grade, but in our Language Arts curriculum, we're at number six in the RISA rank. And here's math and you have a lot of things to look at here. The first column is, um, eighth grade students who took the end-of-grade test in eighth grade math. We have a number of students who don't take that test because they're already taking high school mathematics. And that is this group of students right here, um, who took Algebra One. And, um, you'll notice that a hundred percent of our eighth grade students who are in Algebra One were proficient or distinguished on the Georgia Milestones. Um, that is huge. Um, and Board members, I, you need to, I'll just remind you that a couple of years ago, you approved essentially two new positions at our middle schools to have, uh, what I consider real math specialists who are gifted certified, who teach the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade accelerated math programs. And so they're looking with these kids, they really get to know these kids, and it's really showing right there in those scores. Um, you'll see that there are three people in first place there, three districts that had a hundred percent and it was, um, Wayne, Chandler, and Heavens. Um, we all had a hundred percent of our eighth graders who are taking Algebra One to be proficient or distinguished. And in Wayne County, y'all, I should've broken this down, a whole lot of those were distinguished. Um, it's not that most of them were in the proficient range, most of those kids were in that highest range, so we're really, really proud of that. When you mix these two together, the end of course and the end of grade for eighth grade, we are, um, right at number fourteen. And then in Science, we have the same situation where we teach some high school science, um, and you can see that this first column is our regular eighth grade science, the middle column are our eighth graders who are taking high school physical science. You can see there that about nine, almost ninety-four percent of our students are proficient and distinguished, um, on that measure. And then here is the combination here. Move, uh, here's our eighth grade social studies. Um, moving to high school, um, I, I want you to pay special attention to those numbers in the parentheses on this one because we had such huge growth at our high school. This is Language Arts, this is ninth grade literature, and American literature. Um, and you can see we're third in the RISA district there. Here's math. This is Algebra One and, um, Geometry over here. You can see that we're fourth in both of those and those were both really increases from prior years. Um, in high school science, you see two blues there because we beat the state in both Biology and Physical Science, um, and we're third and fourth in the RISA. And then high school social studies, we also beat the state in, um, percentage of students at distinguished or proficient and we are three and four in the RISA district there. So we're really proud of a lot of those numbers, so there were, we just looked at twenty-eight content areas where we could compare last year's ranks with this year's ranks. And out of twenty-eight areas, we moved up in rank in seventeen of those areas. We stayed the same in two and we dropped down in nine. And so, um, we are really, really pleased with that. Our growth scores won't come out until probably October or maybe November and I'm really excited to get those scores in because I think that we're gonna see tremendous amounts of growth, which is really exciting, um, to our whole community, but it's especially exciting to educators. So just a couple of more slides. Wayne County, we've been working really hard since probably last March or April on this year's district improvement plan. Lots of, um, hours have gone into it and I'm so pleased that I feel like more now than ever before, we have a lot of voices informing our district improvement plans and I'm sure the principals feel the same way about their school improvement plans too. Um, but two of our academic goals, we have three big overarching goals for our district improvement plan and two of them are kind of purely academic goals and so I'm gonna talk a little bit about those. First one is our literacy goal and we're using the Lexile measure just as a way of measuring growth. We're not trying to distill the wide world of literacy down to just one little number, but that Lexile number does allow us to sort of take the temperature and to see how we're growing. And so, our goal is to every year, increase the number of students who are meeting not the bottom of the Lexile stretch band, but the midpoint of the Lexile stretch band. We wanna increase that by five percentage points each year. And so, you can see here where our, um, baseline was and you can see what our target was. If it's highlighted in this purple color, it means that we improved, but we didn't quite make that five percent goal. Um, in sixth grade, it's highlighted in green and that actually means that we surpassed our goal. And in pink, we didn't, we, we actually decreased a little bit from the, um, baseline. Again, that's a situation of not looking though apples to apples. That's looking apples to oranges and we do feel like overall, we're seeing good growth in our, um, reading and Language Arts area. If we compared ourselves to the RISA in this category, we are number eight in the RISA. Um, a few things that we're doing to, um, promote improvement for our literacy goal, we're taking a group to Georgia's Leadership Institute for School Improvement in a few weeks, um, teachers, administrators, and they're going to become Wayne County's literacy team and they're going to really drive some important changes, I think, in how we're approaching literacy and hopefully, um, pull together to apply for some grants from the Governor's Office of Student Achievement so that we can, um, we can come up with ways to serve children at all ends of the spectrum, whether they're children that are behind and need lots of interventions, or the children who are way ahead of the pack and need for us to continue to push them so that they can find success. We wanna be able to provide interventions and support to children at all ranges of that continuum. Um, our middle schools have a real dedication to sustain silent reading class period every day and that is being monitored and, um, embraced, I think, by the staff and the students. We know that if we can just get kids reading independently every day, that that alone will make a huge difference. Our elementary schools are focused on the use of our differentiated reading instruction kit. Our elementary schools are focused on the use of our differentiated reading instruction kits. We had a huge focus last year on K two. We're continuing that focus, and we're going to begin adding a real focus at the, at the notebooks that we're using grades three through five. We're also paying a lot more attention to our universal screeners. Our high school is a hundred percent on board this year with our Star Reading program. And we're just appreciative that that's been able to happen. And so we really believe that by having good data on where students are, that we can figure out how to better meet their needs. And so we're really excited about the full use of universal screeners. We also were able to implement a universal screener for even our very youngest children called Star Early Literacy that's targeting our kindergarten, first graders, and we're excited about that. In math, we also have a mathematics goal in our school approved district improvement plan. We want to improve the number of students needing proficient or distinguished by three percentage points each year. But it's important that you notice this, and our superintendent, Dr. Brinson, assisted on this, and I'm glad that he did. He said, you know, if you just say you want to increase by three percent each year, you don't know for sure that you're pulling kids from each band, and that's really what we want to do. We want to pull kids who are at proficient up to distinguished, kids that are developing up to proficient, and kids who are at the beginning into that developing. And so you can see that we have goals and targets for, oh, sorry about that, for each of those areas, the proficient area and the distinguished area. We're continuing number talks in elementary schools and moving that up to middle schools this year. We are having some training on the six elements, six essential elements of a math lesson. One of our favorite consultants from First District RISA is helping us with that initiative. Our high school is doing a lot with formative assessments, and they're even getting some help from the Georgia Center for Assessment to help analyze their assessments, to make sure that we're preparing students for tests that are at the appropriate rigor. We know that knowing that kind of information will help us to grow students. We're also trying to do a much better job of using our Math Universal Screener, which is called Star Math, to target the kids where they are and where they need the most help. So we're excited about the growth that we feel like we've made. I've been in workshops with our language arts teachers for two days now. It's an initiative called Writing to Win that we're implementing in grades three through eight, and we have a pilot in grade nine. Dr. Warren Combs from the University of Georgia and his son have been here doing the training. And I can't tell you how many times they told me how impressed they are with our teachers. As a matter of fact, Dr. Combs has asked me to charge up a video camera tonight so that he can videotape tomorrow's training with our middle and high school teachers because he's just been so impressed with our teachers. Yesterday was a great day, and I just didn't think it could get any better than yesterday with our third grade teachers and our fourth and fifth grade teachers came in today and completely engaged the whole day. And what Dr. Combs said the day when he left, he said, I just really am shocked at the level of the conversation and how deeply your teachers understand the standards and the level of rigor that students have to get to. And so y'all know, I go all over the place saying that Wayne County has the best students in the world, and I believe that. And I also believe that we got the best teachers in the world, and we're seeing results. Of course, you know, there's always things that we want to kick ourselves off, ah, we could have done better than that. And we'll always look for those spots where we can keep improving. We have a lot of good things happening here, and we have a lot of great teachers that are out there in the trenches that are making that happen. Dr. Brinson always says that, you know, that's where the magic is, is in the classroom. And it's our job, if we work at the county office or if we are administrator in a school, that it's our job to make sure that those teachers who are in the trenches have all the support that they need to be successful. Because they're the ones that are going to be able to make great things happen for our kids. And I'm really proud of the work that they're doing, in fact, that they are doing. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Denny. She put this together all by herself, and it doesn't, takes more than just a couple of minutes, but all that give, I appreciate that work. All right, next time, I might just want to bring to your attention that obviously the last, the last general assembly session was spent a lot of time on school safety and safety plans. And along those lines, the, in the spirit of the law, they provided another exception to student records and meetings as far as being able to discuss things in executive session, that's being actual safety plans. So we, that is an exception that we've added to our affidavit that we have to sign and check before we go into executive session. I just want to bring that to your attention, and we've already made that change, didn't really require any action. That's just, that's part of the new law. Questions, comments on that?
I just want to, and this is probably to answer Mr. Hudson's question about bringing in experts. We are, we currently have a safety committee put together of about nineteen individuals. Myself and Sharon also serve on that committee. But we have the Georgia Emergency Management Representative out of Savannah, and we also have our local emergency management who kind of lead us and guide us on that. Our former emergency management director is now the chief deputy. And so he's been working with Dr. Brinson, him and the chief of police, and they've been going around evaluating some of the schools, trying to figure out what needs we need and things that. So we're working on some things in the middle school, there's some things that's going to take place in the high school. And we're gearing up to come back together for our committee meetings this year. So one of our detectives with the sheriff's office, Robert Brinkley, kind of spearheads coordinating our meetings. He actually texted me today and asked me when we'll be getting ready to do another meeting. So we do have a lot of things that we've worked on already and a lot of things that we have to work on. But we do have a committee, and we do have the experts from the Georgia Emergency Management here advising us about the plans and what things we need to change. They are doing an overall view, and they're giving it to us to look at it, and then we're addressing those needs as we see. There are some grants that we talked about applying for, there's some that we've already applied for. But there is a lot of work and discussion that's going on with those people, and that involves the EMS chief, fire chief, Scrivin' Police, Sheriff's Office, Police Department, paramedics. It's, it's about, it's a good meeting, wouldn't you say, Coach? We have a lot of discussion in there, and everybody, and we have some administrators, and we also have one of our safety people, Mr. Reggie Beasley, who's a part of that as well. So we are putting some things together and working on some things for improvement.
All right, and along those lines, I wanted to bring to your attention, and I kind of jumped in from Dr. Smith's policy reviews, but policy EBB, our policy on safety, that's up for review. Have that before you, any, not, you know, it's just for review unless there's any change that you want to make, see that we should make, research. It was last reviewed December of 2013. Did, we'll let it sit to, or we'll just check it off the list unless you have something. But if you will look over between now and next week, if you'll let us know if you've got something tonight that you want to, that's to work, work on, we can do that.
We just need to put a two, two, nothing, yes, no?
Yeah, it didn't require any action, it's just up for review. I just wanted to bring, put it for you since we were having discussions in that area, and it was almost time for review.
I, I mean, I've seen, I hadn't had any chance to compare it with anything else, so.
Just let me, if you let me know, we'll make any changes or tweaks or additions or deletions. All right. Next time, it's school resource officers. As you know, we've been, I've been in contact, Ms. Ellis, both, we've been in contact with the city manager, Mike Deal, and the chief policeman, Chief Lanes has many conversations, and he is, is working, is working up a plan to, for us to have a full-time designated, you know, resource officer. You know, we've kind of had that, I guess, a hybrid, we've had a police officer, law enforcement that's been there providing security, really. So it's, you know, we've, we've been taking a lot of liability in that, in that realm. Anyway, this would clean that up. And so, you know, we've had some conversations, but we're at a point now, this is what he's, he's proposing. A first-year fee, and, and the way it would work, this, this individual would be our employee for a hundred eighty days during school and be, you know, sixty days with the city of Jessup. Though some of those are, help me out, Ms. Ellis, some of those are be training days, some of them they'd actually be patrolling our schools during the summer, and we're doing walkthroughs and just safety checks, you know, as well as, you know, doing some work with the city police department. But that amount was, the first time, the first year was a hundred and ten thousand dollars for that individual, for one officer. That includes all the startup costs as far as equipment, salaries, training, the guns, all the things they would need. And it would go down, and that also includes a, a vehicle, which we've had some other discussions about that. We can talk more about it in just a second. But the second year, that, that price would go all the way down to seventy-five thousand dollars for the second year. And again, that's per officer, which is, which is a pretty good increase in what we've had, what we have budgeted for this year. Which we, budgeted this year, we increased it to try to, you know, try to cover two. To have, you know, two officers, one at the high school full-time, and one kind of float between both middle schools and go in by the elementary schools when needed. That's kind of the proposal, I just need to know if that's acceptable enough that I can go back to the, to the chief and say, yes, our folks are supporting this, where he can still go forward and, you know, we still got to have the council support in, in doing this plan. But I appreciate what the city's done thus far to even get us to this point.
Okay, yes. What's the budget now? What we have, I can get it.
About eighty-three.
Eighty-three?
It's about eighty-three. And I, I just want to give a little background that what we've been doing for the last twelve years is we've been contracting this through officers, through the sheriff's office and the police department. And what we do is we send out a sign-up sheet where officers are able to sign up on their off days. This must not conflict with their regular job duties. And Ms. Harren had the opportunity of helping me put that together for many years when, before I became a part of the school board. And we've just kind of gotten to the point where officers are, you know, not wanting to commit every workday that they're off to work at our high school, and we talked about increasing it to our middle school. So it's really not getting enough participation from neither the city or the county. And I've had several conversations with Dr. Brinson over the last year about it, and the need for us having a, a full-time person or persons. And, you know, it's, it's really becoming a burden because you see the need for it, but there, there's not a lot you can do because you cannot make people work on their off days, they have to be willing to do it. And they also have to be willing to work within the parameters of what we have in place as far as our school policies and understanding that these are not criminals on the streets, these are children in the educational setting. So there is some differences there and some training that, that we really need to get. Starting a school resource police department would kind of put us where we probably don't want to be. And, and because I've talked with Post, our police, peace officer standards and training council, we will be at a situation where we will have two employees that we will be managing as a board. We will manage a superintendent and we will manage a police chief. That is giving us another responsibility. I think that we have a lot of responsibility for what we do now. And definitely not the route that I want to see us go. GSBA, I've sent some of y'all, I sent all of you the emails and things from GSBA that tells us that they're encouraging us to work with the local law enforcement authorities to work out the full-time positions and contracting that through them and letting them be their employees for liability concerns. And they're not encouraging us to get into the business of running a police department, they want us to focus on education. So been doing this homework for the last two years. On top of that, I, I do coordinate all of our security needs for the entire school district. That's athletics, night school, charter school, and both day school as a part of one of my job responsibilities with the city of Jessup. So, you know, it's, I think we're at a point where we have to make some tough decisions. Yes, it is an expensive cost to get it started up, but if we start a police department, it's going to be even more expensive. And we're going to bring in another, which will be a public safety director that will answer to the superintendent and answer to us, and we're going to have to pay this person a chief salary. And so those are the things that, that we're challenged with if we do that. There are some school systems that, that have done that, Appleton County currently has a model in place, and their board is talking about adding more officers. But now they're understanding that that's going to be an expense and a responsibility that the current person in charge does not have the capability of doing. So they're meeting with their chief and sheriff to discuss options of trying to contract more officers to them. But they also have to understand that these officers will be full-time police officers, and they do have additional duties outside of their duties that will be assigned to the school district for a hundred and eighty days. Glen County currently has a model where they actually have a police department, and they have a school public safety director. And he has a department of about fifteen to twenty officers. And he also has part-time officers that work for Brunson PD and Glen County Sheriff's Office that work on their off days as well. Camden County and Pierce County have just went to the model that we are currently trying to do. They have contracted services through, in Pierce County, through their city police department. And they've contracted two officers through their city police department, and they're currently contracting and working on contracting a third officer through their sheriff's office. And Camden County School Board just contracted three officers through their sheriff's office and one through the Kingsland Police Department. So a lot of districts are doing that. And so we're, we're just at this point where I want us to really think about making this commitment and, and think about the importance of putting this model into place, and, and I think it's going to grow. Are we going to see that, there is going to be a need, because what Appleton County superintendent discussed to me is, they have two. They have one in the high school, but their board currently wants one in every school, and they have eight schools like we have. And then the superintendent sat down, I gave her some figures on what that's going to cost to make that happen. And she was blown away, like, she was like, my board just don't, I said, no. None of us see it unless we're actually working in it, and, and I have, you know, the privilege of serving on the school board and with the city of Jessup. So I see it, and I know what needs to be done. And I just want y'all to think about this as we move forward and consider this as being an important step for this board to make. And understand that it's going to be costly, and, and it's going to be costly, some of them we're going to agree with, and some of them that we are not. But we won't have any liabilities by doing it this way. There, there'll be nothing, there'll be a city of Jessup employee, and, and they'll answer to the chief of police and whatever they have an issue, superintendent, call the chief of police for their discipline problems or health problems or anything that's going on with them.
I'm actually in full agreement that we do need a school resource officer. I understand that we need to pay these individuals a fair salary, I'm in full agreement with that. I'm also in full agreement that we don't need a, to start our own police department. I've talked to some individuals myself, you know, about that and understand, you know, the liabilities. I also understand that to contract someone out as, as a private contract means that they would not have any police power or anything, that would just be just like security. They'd be like Barney Fife with his bullet in his pocket.
And they'll still have to call the police.
They still have to call the police. But on the other hand, I don't agree with providing funds for a police car. I talked to the CFO over at Liberty County, and they have resource officers there. Their resource officer, they pay their, the resource, resource officer's salary is what they are responsible for. They basically are doing what you're talking about that we want to do. They write a check to, to the police department or sheriff's department, you know, sheriff covers Liberty County High School, and the police department covers those schools within the city. They do not provide a vehicle for them. In the funding that, the money that they send to the city, they do not provide funding for that. I talked to a person who has been a. I talked to a, uh, person who has been a, uh, in management for a long time and is currently a, uh, police, uh, business manager, and that individual informed me that we need to, uh, make sure before we make any decision that we, uh, come up with a memorandum of understanding or a contract that spells out exactly what our funds are going to, uh, going to be, uh, paying for. Uh, I was told that if we did purchase a police car, which to me, we don't have the funds to actually do, that we are within our rights, this is from this police, uh, person, that we are within our rights to put on that vehicle the Wayne County Board of Education, even though we do not have a police department. But because we're providing funds for that, that that is the property of the, the Wayne County Board of Education. Uh, I talked to, uh, one of the police officer, security, or SROs over at Liberty County and, uh, asked him, uh, does, uh, the school system provide your uniforms? He says, no, I said, well, does the police department provide your uniforms? He says, no, we pay for our own uniforms, we pay for that stuff. And like I said, I know we've got to pay a fair salary, but I will not sit back and watch us be gouged of funding when we can go a different route, or not a different route, but I feel like the city has got to help us. I mean, and I talked to them and they were very cordial, uh, when I went there, I just went there just to, uh, support my, uh, city commissioners and they asked me a question about, you know, things that we had talked about. And I felt like at that time, because, um, they are constituents of ours that, you know, I could share with them what was discussed in public session. And so, uh, you know, I just discussed, you know, I told them, you know, what my view was on things. And I also explained to them that I was not representing the Wayne County Board of Education, but I was a citizen. And I was concerned about the safety of these kids that we currently have in our school system as well as I have a new, uh, grandchild that was born in October and I'm hoping that I can commence booting for my child to come and attend school in Wayne County, and I am hoping that that child will be able to be, feel safe in a school environment as well as me as big mama, I'll be able to sit home and go, well, my baby's going to be okay when he goes to school. But once again, we have got to look and make a, uh, very, very informed decision. Now, I know that in the past that the sheriff's department has not really wanted to do anything. But I can also understand, especially as the coach, Coach, uh, Kelly can tell you, that when you've gone to school all day, you've taught all day, and then you've done practice all day, if you get a one day off out of those six days you work, because that's basically what it was, and is for a coach. You know, uh, you're not wanting anybody else's kids on Sunday. So I can understand that officer working those twelve-hour shifts and then somebody comes and asks them, well, we want you to come and cover the school and not wanting to really do that. I understand that, fully understand. So that's why I say I'm, you know, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, us hiring a full-time officer. But we've got to make sure that, you know, we look at everything and this, like I said, with sheriff department, have we gone back to the sheriff department as of looking over this now to let them know that what we're doing is we're hiring a totally different person. We might get a cheaper price from the sheriff department if, you know, because they're, they're putting another person, this is not an existing, uh, an existing position. So they may be willing, or they may have somebody be willing to apply to do this. If they know that, okay, I'm going to school, I'm working five days a week, I'm not going to have to work, uh, my regular shift and then go and do overtime. So, I mean, I feel like that we need to make sure we open this up to everybody, to give everybody an opportunity to have a fair chance and also give us an opportunity to maybe reduce the cost and the price of this and not feel like we're handcuffed and strapped to do something.
And I'm, I'm going to interject there, um, as I said earlier, me and Dr. Brinson have worked on this for two years. Um, and the former chief of police, Lynn Takaki, nor the current sheriff, um, would even, um, entertain the, the amount of work that we've done. Um, Chief Lane has, um, made the attempt to sit down and talk with us about some of the things, um, that we need to, in order to get this started. Now, yes, a lot of police departments do not provide, um, their officers with things, but I work for a good police department. And I'm not saying this because Commissioner Armstrong is sitting here, but the city of Jessup takes care of every one of their police officers, um, good. Um, I have, and I've been there for nine years and I'm never paid for a piece of my equipment, never. The city of Jessup has provided me with every tool I need to be a successful officer in this county. Um, and, and I'm grateful for that because there are officers that get paid nothing and they have to pay for every uniform. My mom has served here, but everything that she got, she's paid for. Um, so I'm saying that, you know, that, that they're, the cost is because the city of Jessup does things a little different. And, and I guess they're, they're kind of perfecting the model of what needs to be done for police officers across the board. Um, because I can tell you that the city of Jessup, um, has taken care of us in, in our increases in cost of living and got our pay skills up. When I started, you know, we were at eleven ninety-five was the starting pay. Um, I was, I was starting officers up to, um, almost sixteen dollars an hour now, um, just in nine years. Um, their police departments, such as Long County and, and Little, and, um, Little Wistie that are not there, Pierce County's not there, Appleton County's not there. Um, so there, there are a lot of things that the city has put into place, um, for. On top of that, you know, I'm, I, at this moment with the county, um, because the county's negotiations would not only take place with the, the sheriff, but it will take here, um, place with the county commission. I don't think I'm comfortable enough to, to give the county commission any amount of money to do anything because they might spend it on what they want to. Um, and so that's just where I'm standing on that, I'm, I'm not.
Well, I, I also have another question, mentioning the, uh, memorandum of understanding.
Yes.
Uh, I was also advised that, uh, it would be in our best interest of, as a board, to meet with the, uh, city commissioners. So it's not, uh, well, I think this or I think that, that we can come together and talk and come, maybe come to a consensus.
Yes.
Because like I said, they're willing to work with us. We just got to, you know, put it out there because, once again, there are sixty days and I talked with you and you said, there may be thirty days that person may be in training. But there's going to be another thirty days that the city is going to be able to take that individual and use that individual on the street or for whatever purpose. Also, I want to make sure that it is understood that unless it is an emergency, a dire emergency, that this individual, because you're shorthanded, won't be able to be removed and taken from our schools to be, you know, used for, uh, city police purposes. So, I mean, those, and those things got to be put, put in writing, you know, it's got to be put in writing. I don't want a handshake or, or an agreement, yes, we did this because things always come back around, well, I don't think that's what we said. No, I want things put in writing and, and a contractual.
And, and that's what we would have to do, GSBA advised us of that, and Corey's already, um, looking into that. Our attorney is already looking into the agreement, um, we, you know, the, the mayor has already, um, talked with the city attorney. And our attorneys would have to get the agreement and look over it, but it would be a memorandum agreement. This division would be a division under the police department, but it would be its own division, just like detectives. We don't take detectives off the streets to work, um, off, off their assignment to work the streets. Um, I was one of those flexible officers that did anything in the department. So if they were shorthanded, I did come out the drug office and work the road because that's just me and that was my decision. But nobody never made me do that, I volunteered to do it, to help the streets out. Um, and, and that's one of the things we discussed, those people that we hire have to be in our schools and functioning, um, one hundred percent of the time. And if school's out, then they, they, they come and work at the police department.
So that's why we're saying that they're going to be working with, uh, the police department, you know, during the summer or whatever, that maybe they would pay, you know, certain things, they'll provide the car, they're, you know, do certain things because they are, you know, the city's employees. Although we're playing, you know, so that's going to help them out during that time because, yeah, part of the summer months, a lot of times when people go on vacation.
Right, but you, but. This is another thing, um, the, the city police department is currently a twenty-eight man police department. So we'll be increasing them to more manpower. Um, with that being said, there are additional things that you got to have for more manpower, you got to order extra guns, you got to order extra cars. We have three guys getting ready to come out, um, and, and the cars that the city just purchased are already assigned. Um, when they graduate in September, um, they got to have a car driving now, they, they're going to be in the car with me for.
That's why we need to come together, talk to the city together as two.
But, but we're still got, but, but I understand it, but there's still cars that's got to be bought.
I understand, we need to come together as two government entities because until we talk to them, we don't know what they will or will not do.
Well, I can tell you where Chief Lane stands is, is, and I, he's, he, like I said, he spent a lot of time and he's kind of got it itemized down and broken down, and it kind of is a take it or leave it approach.
They got to tell Chief Lane the other night that, uh, he had to come to them and talk to them, that, that, that the city council is the one that kind of. They got to say, you know, to make the decisions on things, that's why I said, we need to get with the city council. They are the ones that say yea or nay about the money, decisions and things, and I'm, I'm, I'm firm on that one.
Dr. Brinson, if I may make a comment, um, as you and, um, as our safety committee endeavors to negotiate an agreement with the city council, I think it's, uh, worth mentioning that there is an inherent responsibility of our police force, whether it be the city police or the county police, to provide safety and security to all the citizens of Wayne County and Jessup. And to a certain degree, they are responsible for the security in our schools as well. Now, we mentioned earlier that we are in the education business. I know, and the city of, of the Jessup Police Department is in the law enforcement business. So I would just, um, counsel you to, when you meet with, uh, Chief Lane, that, uh, you know, he has to understand that he has a certain responsibility, uh, whether he signs a contract with the Wayne County Board of Education or not. I'm just saying that, uh, we need to be good, good stewards of the taxpayers' money for the board of education as well as he does for the city of Jessup and the taxpayers in the city of Jessup. But, uh, I guess, long story short, what I'm trying to say is, uh, the city has a vested interest in this being successful as well. And, uh, personally, I, I'm not much in favor of the take it or leave it approach. That would be my only comment, thank you.
All right, so my, my take is on this is, um, I, I, I realize the city and the, when you pick up the telephone and you dial nine-one-one, somebody's got to come respond. I spent twenty-four years in that, that field and, and you're right, somebody's got to come. My question, when we have a football game and there's extra police officers there, are they volunteering?
No, sorry, we're, we're paying them.
We're paying, we're paying. Any event that we have where we need extra officers or any, any type of extra type of, of people? I mean, most of them aren't volunteering when they're professionals like that, they're being paid.
But there's some volunteering, now sheriff's office does some walkthroughs, uh, at times, few and far in between. Um, Chairman Ellis is at the schools, taking up a slack just about daily, you know, so, I mean, that's, that's covered. So, and we have other folks that do the same things, so I don't want to present it as, you know, they don't come unless they're, they're paid. Uh, but we do pay them, we do pay them well, in my opinion.
Okay, um, liability wise, when one of these officers make a arrest or makes an arrest, who's, who's responsible if anything goes wrong? Is that on the county?
It's on the rest of the agency, certainly.
The rest of the agency, yes.
Depends, well, it depends on the situation, we, we've had to pay workers' comp, uh, claims for, I mean, each officer been injured at the school, you know, detained kids.
And, and I think all that from, you know, we didn't have to face this in my career, but it's coming. I see it in the career of me now, you know, liability and having to have insurance and liability stretches a long ways these days, a lot further than what it should. But I was just thinking, you know, if we had an employee that was full-time by an agency and they were contracted to work with us just like any other private contractor that we hire, we have a bunch of private contractors. There's certain things that, that, that they have to have to do the job that we don't exactly pay for directly. Is, I mean, and that's, that's included in the contract. And I can understand the officer needing a police car, I mean, I want them to be able to act as a, as a normal police officer. I want them to be able to, if, if we had two, that's, that's my, I, I want eight police officers, I want one in every school. We don't have the budget for that, we can't afford it, I really, if, if we can do it tonight, then I can make it happen. I would do it, I, I want one, I mean, I have kids in school, I want our kids to be safe. One police officer at a school is not going to make that whole school completely impervious to anything that happens. But if we don't have anything, we're not even trying. So tomorrow, I want to make sure there's, you know, a, an officer at the high school. You know, I want them, I want them to be well compensated for what they do. I don't want them to have to pay for private insurance on their own because they're, they came out and they have to get their own liability insurance to cover if they, um, have to do something at the school because they're a private contractor. That's what I, that's what I want, but what can we afford? That's the bottom line, what can, what can we really do right now? And that's the bottom line.
Well, and I'm, and I want to say this, um, to, to talk about some of the volunteer things. And one of the things that the sheriff's office is doing, because they're facing shortages like, like we were at the city, that once our guys get out of academy, we'll be back fully staffed. But one of the things that they're doing is they're showing up to the school every morning. And they're showing up and they're greeting people and they're walking through and doing things like that. But one of the issues that we're dealing with is what happens when everybody goes to their office at eight o'clock? When everybody's out taking care of calls for service for the citizens in the community, then the school system becomes a call for service. That means the administrator or whoever's dealing with the issue has to call dispatch, dispatch has to dispatch it out. That's how that happened, and, and I think where we're at is I, I want to see us get away from that. I want, whenever there's an issue, they should have to call dispatch, they call their resource officer, hey, come and deal with this. And if their resource officer's tied up on something, they can rely on their assistants from the street units to come in and play. The city and county does do a lot, and there are a lot of officers that give their time. Um, and, and as I've, because I am a board member, everything that I do in this school district is voluntary. Um, and, and that's a lot of hours, and when I calculated how many hours the other night, um, over the last three years, it was close to forty-one thousand dollars, um, that, of time that I have given, um, to this district over the last three and a half years. I'm not complaining about that because I love doing it. Today, when the officer was there, I showed up for lunch duty and did all three lunches today, Dr. Brinson seen me. Um, and, and it takes a lot of time to do that, but somebody has to give me permission to leave my regular functioning job to go and do that. Um, luckily today I was serving for the district attorney and she allows me to do things like that, um, on her time. Um, and she has been a part of this process as well because, you know, starting another police department is something that she has to have input on. And she has also advised us that, you know, us to try to work with the city to do this versus starting another police department. She deals with, in Appleton County, um, where they have a school police chief there, and there are issues that he's only restricted to do certain things because he's not sworn to the police chief of municipal association or to the sheriff's office. And so those are just options and things I want to share with y'all and, and, you know, I, I'm, I know we, we got some costs here, but, you know, I think we, we definitely need to make this step forward to discussing this, um, further. Um, and, and let's try to put some, um, some legwork behind getting this finalized.
Well, are we going to, uh, make a decision to talk to the, uh, try to set up a meeting with the city?
I'm looking for some direction.
That's what, that's what I'm asking, I'm asking that we, uh, set up a meeting with the city.
Um, the only, the only time that I think that a meeting would be required was when we get to the memorandum of agreement. As far as the actual police duties and responsibilities, that falls in the hands of the chief of police.
I understand that, but we, we've been talking about this going on a month now. And my thing is, if we can go on and talk with them and ask them and find out from them what they might be willing to do prior to actually trying to write up a contract and everything, then they would have an understanding of what we're asking for, uh, asking for. And they won't be getting secondhand information. And it'll be the same thing for us, we'll understand where they, where they actually stand and won't be getting secondhand information. For instance, like, uh, uh, the things that getting ready to come up, we talked about the sidewalk, one said, uh, you weren't going to do it, the other one said, we're going to do it, and then it was just back and forth. So rather than have that go on, why don't we meet together?
What's your timeframe on this? Because if we're going to put this into play, like, like the rest of this week, we're not going to have an officer at the hospital. I'm not going to be able to do that tomorrow and go and monitor lunches tomorrow or Thursday because I'm on night shift. I'll be back on Friday to monitor lunches and do things that need to be done, but, um, that's the issue that we're, we're, that we're facing. But, um, that's the issue that we're, we're, that we're facing. We don't have a resource officer at all, um, right now. But the hiring window for the police academy is starting in September. So, we're going to do this and we're going to get somebody hired and geared up for the police academy, which that's going to be a two-month time span.
Somebody need to make a phone call.
To where?
To the city, to the, uh, city manager, the city, uh, the, uh, the mayor, you got a city, city commissioner sitting right back there. She might be able to tell you when they may have an opening or something, but we got to do something. We can't just jump into something that out. Catch myself. You can't just jump into something and not have everything that you need to make an informative decision. That is irresponsible. We've seen, we've seen firsthand what irresponsibility dealing with our constituents' money, where it leads you and what happens.
So, what do you want, tell, tell me what do you want the city to pay for?
Can, uh, she's speaking. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Armstrong.
If you all let me, we have a meeting on the fourth from next month.
Mm-hmm.
And I can find out from the council, one of the good day for us to meet with you guys, that I can get, I can come up some of your notes, something just going over and over on this.
Right.
And I'll just talk to the council and see where we can get together.
You know, they may say, well, we'll take care of the uniforms, we'll take care of.
And that, and that's fine.
They may say, they may say we can, yeah.
We need to make a decision as far as if we're going to move forward with it. We can discuss figures and fees, but we need to make a decision on whether we want to even do this before we even have a discussion on it.
I'm just kind of skeptical because when we do things sometimes, they, the, the money thing comes up and, and I, I just want to make sure that when we make a decision today, we've already said that we want this. Everybody's already said.
I want it.
I can go, we want this, the direction we want to go, that we're wanting to go with this type of format. But I don't want to go with the decision that we're definitely going to go with the Jessup Police Department. You have not actually taken the next step and asked the sheriff department. I know what happened two years ago or whatever. But today, or a week ago, or a month ago, or two months ago, have we had this discussion when we've made a decision that we're going to hire a full-time person?
And as I, and as I've told you, when we're dealing with a constitutional officer, we also have to deal with the county administration, the county administrator.
I understand.
And we have to deal with the county commission. And I'm not going to give them a dime of money from this school board after they have done the things that they have done to this school board and the situation that we're currently facing with our taxes. And then they had, that's the meeting last night to try to throw us under the bus and say, they got, here's eighteen meals and they're going to keep it. I'm not negotiating nothing with, with, with them. I will negotiate with the city, but I'm not negotiating things.
Nah, they're going to try to throw us under the bus because they actually asked me, uh, Mr. Sharon, y'all doing eighteen meals? I said, yes, we are staying at eighteen meals and we are not increasing anything. They allowed me to, and that's, that's exactly what I said. We are staying at eighteen meals and we are not increasing anything. And after that, I heard several people go out and said, we got to pass the east plus.
We do got to pass the east plus.
That's exactly what they're expecting.
But the, the other negative thing of that was that, well, look at the school board, they got more eight meals than anybody.
Uh, that's not what I heard.
I'm just telling you.
But that, but that's not what, that's not, anyway, that's, that's, that's not here there. That's not what the conversation is about at this time. The conversation is about what are we going to do? How are we going to go forward with this decision on the police department issue? And like I said, we've got to make an informative decision. I know it's very important, but it cannot be rash, it cannot be hasty, because haste makes waste.
I, I got a question. How, I mean, and I understand, what, what other information do you want?
You're going to be.
Above what the police department has provided and what the figures that we've provided.
I want to know what the city will do. I want to meet with the city, point blank period. I mean, there's no other way to put it.
Okay.
It's plain and simple. I want to us as a board to meet with the city so we can find out how they can help us with this situation.
I, I don't think that, I don't think the city is, is at a, a situation to help us without increasing their.
Let the city make that decision.
And I will. But I want also to ask that we go ahead and make a decision on, are we going to move forward with this and discuss numbers and figures at, at when the city allows it. Because they're not meeting till next, um, next Tuesday. We, if we want to be trying to hiring a police officer for the, for the September academy, we got to start working now. And within.
But how you going to have someone to come up with any figures? That, that's not making any sense to me.
The figures have already been provided. It's up to the city regardless if they want to accept.
No, I'm not accepting the figures.
Uh, question, just for clarification. Jay, you said, uh, the, the first year expense would be a hundred and some odd thousand?
Hundred and ten.
And we currently have budgeted eighty-three.
Correct. I mean, we're a month into school, so that's, we've spent some of that eighty-three, but I don't expect to pay the whole hundred and ten either.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I was, that was the point I was going to make. Again, when you, when you negotiate uh, with Chief Lane, you know, um, drive a hard bargain, just like he tries to.
I understand, but you understand, he's holding the cards. I mean, he's, he's been through this. And I'll send this document to you where you can see where he's, he summed it up. Um, and that's our conversations I had.
What exactly, what exactly is the salary? The exact amount of salary that we're talking about giving the person? Because, like I said, you know, I'm a former edu-, I'm a former educator of Wayne County, been employed by Wayne County. I have a master's degree. And if the only thing I did was taught school, I would not make fifty-eight thousand dollars a year.
That, that's not the salary.
That's why I'm asking. I need, I need clarification on that.
The salary of a police officer is thirty-three thousand dollars.
It's okay.
It's relevant, is it a new person, is it an old person, if they get?
On top of, on top of what the city of Jessup provide, again, I'll tell you, the city of Jessup takes care of it. My, all of my health insurance and my retirement is paid for by the city of Jessup.
Not mine.
You can't, but you cannot hire a police officer and not offer them the same benefits that every other police officer has. They are the same, just like us. They have the same powers, they have the same jurisdiction, and they work for the city of Jessup. So, you can't hire a police officer and say, well, you're going to work for the school system, but we only going to give you just the salary. We ain't going to worry about your health insurance.
So, salary benefits, salary, not, 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 not talking about the, um, um, liability, you know, not talking about.
On top of that, you have salary?
I, I want to exclude that because I understand the liability. I'm talking about salaries, benefits like life insurance, health insurance, dental insurance, optical insurance, uh, whatever, those things. I'm calling that salary because if I was to do something, that would be called income. So, how much income are we talking about giving a police officer?
Will be about forty-eight thousand dollars would be for all of the salaries. That means is what we looked at. Ms. Allen?
Based on, yeah, based on the years of experience.
But, based on the years of experience, yeah.
Average person.
Average person would be forty-eight thousand dollars. That's the salary including all the benefits. And then you have the equipment that you have to, to mend this person with. Um, they got to have a, a gun. They got to have, we have three guns. We have a taser, we have a body camera, our cars and all of our, um, our handcuffs and our asphaltons and everything that we have is, is broke down here.
And that's why I was asking the city, they may help us with that, but.
I understand that, but that's still going to be another expense that they're going to have to go back and approve. The city's budget's already been approved. Will they be willing to amend their budget and say, hey, we're not, we don't have to pay that?
They told us, they probably told us to look at it. That's exactly what they said.
Well, they probably will. But I think that we're at a point now where we've got to make a decision on, are we going to move forward with this? And if they want to say, hey, we accepted this thing that y'all got, but we want to give y'all a discount, or we want to pay for half of this?
But we got to accept saying that we're going to purchase a vehicle, a car or something, and we're all sitting here saying, are we financially in this situation to be able to do that? That, that's still not making any sense.
I, I think it's our responsibility. If we're going to provide an officer, we got to provide a car. They got to have.
I don't think so. They can drive to school and, because they don't have to drive around the school or anything.
Yes, they, yeah, they want, these people are going to be working the recs. They're going to have to drive.
They shouldn't have to work any recs.
Yes, that's a part of their job duties as a police officer.
Not during the day, not during our time, it's not.
Every, every resource officer that signs up at the high school.
That's why the city needs to buy the car.
Every, every resource officer that has signed up on their day off, if the rec happens at One Jacket Drive, they work the rec. One happens at Martha.
Well, that's not what they do in Liberty County, because I question about that as well. So, that when they're at that school, they're at that school, they not pull them out? If there's a rec out there on, uh, general, and on general squirming, if there's a rec out there in front of Bradwell on general, general squirming, we don't owe, we don't owe One Jacket Drive, do we?
No, but if a rec happens.
But we don't know.
If a rec happens in the front entrance where most of them happen, we're going to want people to go out there. When I, when, when I.
They can walk out there, why don't they? I mean, I understand what you're saying. You're talking about the lights and all this kind of stuff like you said, but you're going to bring it back up anyway.
You are.
But y'all want to vote, y'all vote. That's, I mean, it's cool with me. We're going to do what we're going to do.
I think it's worth, uh, authorizing Jay to, to go forward with discussions and, and let him bring back to us a, a final proposal.
I don't want that brought back.
I don't think we, that is a final proposal.
That, that, this is.
That's it, that's what we're telling you.
Unless.
Certainly, I want the city to look into it and, and, and if they want to say they're going to take care of some of the costs, that's fine, but I think that's a decision.
No, we have, we're the ones that are in need, so we need to meet them and meet with them.
We're indeed, so we need to foot the bill. And if the city wants to be gracious to us and say, hey, we're going to give y'all discount, that's, that's.
Why, why do we need to fit the bill and no other county actually does that? We, I mean, I'm tired of people making us look like that. Jesus, God help me. I'm done.
It's our responsibility.
I understand. I understand our responsibility. I fully understand our responsibility. And I also understand our responsibility to our constituents and to our constituents' money to make sure that we're good stewards of our financial situation. I understand.
Well, Coach, I'm going to just say it like this. We, we do a lot of things.
And I love you, baby.
I love you too, but we do a lot of things in this district. We do a lot of things in this district and we approve a lot of things and we talk about a lot of things. But when it comes down to the safety, we have not met the need of providing all the safety things. We talked about building a one-point-five million dollar track and a weight room, adding positions and doing all this. And then we're going to sit here and debate about paying a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the city.
And we have not built it because we are good stewards of our people's money and it is put on the back burner. That is the reason why, that is the reason why that money is put on the back burner because of that.
Let's put this part for the back burner.
Of our ki-, of our kids. And if a lot of the things that have happened here in the, uh, up here have happened, have happened recently, had not have happened, we would not be at this point in this time. Everybody called me when I asked about, uh, doing certain things for security and things, that, oh, you just over the top. Okay, now, I'm stepping back going, okay, we, we still got to make sure that we can afford this. We got, sure got to make sure that it's balanced and fair. I don't think there's anything wrong with what I'm asking to do as far as going to the city. I don't think there's anything wrong. That's like going to the car dealership and saying, hey, I'm going to buy this car. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and sign on the dotted line and we'll decide later whether or not you're going to charge me fifty thousand for this car or if you're going to charge me thirty thousand for this car. That's what you're telling us to do.
No, and what I'm saying is, is that it's our responsibility to provide it, and if the city wants to help us in it, that should be their decision. We should not go to them and say, well, y'all need to do this, y'all need to help us, or we can't do it.
That's not anything we're asking.
Well, we can ask after we make a decision to do what we're supposed to do.
If you ask them after you make a decision and you've decided that this is what you're going to do and you're going to sign it, I, I tell you what.
We haven't signed it.
I, let, let, let me finish. I tell you what they're going to say. Well, why should we go back and, uh, go back on it? They said they can do it, they can handle it. That's what they're going to say, because that's exactly what I would say. You talk them three or four days.
And if the city decides they don't want to help in any part of it, we still have to do it.
Because we are not looking at other avenues and other futures. We are not looking at it. That is the way I see it.
What, what do we need to look at? Do we need to go out here and hire a bona fide? Because that, I mean, that's, is that what you want to look at?
No, I just want to look at, like I said, uh, I, see, I don't have a vested interest as far as, uh, the city, the county or whatever. I'm just trying to find out if you talk to the county again and see what they say. They, they got to pay for their own, uh, uniforms. They got to pay, you said your mom, you got to pay. Your mother may decide that she want to come out here and do it for five days.
And she got to go to police academy too. Because, because she's a jailer. So, somebody's got to pay for to go to police academy. Who's going to sponsor it?
You, you had other sheriff guys that may want to come out there and do it for five. If they find out, I'm going to have a straight five-day-a-week shift.
They're not going to do it if, if they have their responsibilities right now is to be a patrolman. They're not going to create a position for nobody to come out here.
If we create a position for the Jessup Police Department, why couldn't they create a position for the Sheriff's Department? They're adding, you're adding more manpower. You, we're not taking from the people you already have. You just said we're adding two additional positions for that.
So, you're going to have to approve and advertise. If you can't, if you can't fulfill the position without that.
Well, you can do what you got to do.
You're not going to ever get to the point where.
Man, this, this is sensible. This is just do what we got to do. Just go ahead and vote and do what you got to do. If that's what y'all going to do. Because I'm, I'm, I'm not going to hold these people up any longer. I appreciate you all and everything. Let's do what we're going to do.
I make the motion that we vote on the, uh, to, to negotiate with the city. We would have gotten the numbers. Um, can I see that? If you're on do. Make sure I got all my highlights.
Now, I can see a couple of them.
Question, Jay, the, the hundred and ten thousand, is that reflecting backing out some of the salary where, where that the police officer would actually be working for the city? Are we footing the whole?
Mm-hmm. You're footing the whole.
I, I, I don't think that's good business there. I don't think we ought to be paying, uh, for a police officer if he's not doing his cool business. I think what Sharon is saying is, uh, you know, Mike Lane is the chief of police, but he's not the final decision maker on this thing. There may be some latitude to, uh, negotiate those numbers and certainly at least to reflect the amount of time that he's not working for the, for the Board of Education, uh, to back that out of that hundred and ten thousand dollar figure.
Might be, and it might be, and, and certainly, and Mike Lane, uh, Chief Lane certainly understands that he answers to the city manager and the city council. But I wish, Sharon, that Mr. Mike Hill was, has been involved in these conversations. He's well aware of things and he's charged my, uh, Chief Lane to run his department. That's, that's kind of what I'm saying. That's what he's presenting now, the, the council as a whole. And certainly just decided to do something different, but, you know, that takes, you know, majority of the council.
To me, that's unfair. Expect the Board of Education to pay for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days for a police officer when he's going to work a hundred and eighty for the Board of Education?
No, it's not three-sixty-five. It's not three-sixty-five.
We don't work three-hundred-and-sixty-five.
We think, we think it's two-fourty.
Okay, two-forty. Well, okay, well, my point is the exact same thing. Why should we pay for two-forty when he works for us a hundred and eighty?
Two-hundred-and-sixty days.
Okay, well, that's just the point I'm making. That, that seems unfair to me.
Actually, they will only be working for the city about thirty days because a month of that, of that time, they're going to be in training in the summertime. There are school resource trainings, there are different conferences that these people have to go to manually to keep their hours for certification of every year.
Well.
We're out, we're out Christmas break, we're out two weeks for almost two weeks, almost full month. If you put the weekends in it, you're out for that time for, uh, Christmas break as well. You know, I hadn't even thought about those, those breaks, those holidays. Are they going to be on break, on vacation then?
They're going to be off. They will only work during the summer time. They're going to be off during that time.
But it, it seemed like at a minimum, if, if he's going to work thirty days for the city of Jessup, then they ought to absorb one-twelfth of his salary and benefits.
That's been very petty now, I'm just thinking.
Well, I mean, uh, from my perspective, it's being pretty, uh, very petty. From the other side, it's paid, it's paid one-hundred percent.
Right. One, one thing I interject, now, Chief Lane did put in there, some, there's still some hidden costs. He didn't itemize everything out like paying some cartridges and certain.
No, there ain't hidden costs.
That's the final number, correct.
That's not hidden cost.
But there's some hidden costs for his, um.
On our end, there's costs that, that, other costs that the city has to pay.
Maintenance of car, those stuff, that, that's, that's not included in there.
Who's going to pay for tires? Who's going to pay for ammunition? Who's going to pay for oil changes? Those are all the costs that are going to be inside of the city. Because when I take my cruiser to Jessup Tire, when I take my cruiser to Jessup Tire, I get four tires, that's seven-hundred and fifty dollars.
What you think about on average, if they're driving to the school, other than driving from one school to the other school, you know, the one officer that does that, if we decided, ever decided to, uh, they're driving to the school and that's not a whole lot where to tell your tires. It's also not a whole lot of mileage for oil changes. So, I mean, that, that's not a big expense. Not a very big expense at, at, at all. So, I mean, that, that's not even in the, the equation to me.
And the, and the price he has listed, I believe, is, is, was a reduced price because he knows, you know, probably I've seen a brand, brand new car up here. Figure he's sitting giving us, I thought, I thought it was thirty, thirty-two.
So, that's about a hundred and eighty days of service to Wayne County schools or about more than that? Is that it? That's, that's enough. See, that's the part, I, I, I understand what we got to do. That's the part. I don't have a problem negotiating with it, let's get it done. If, if that's the number, they want to try and see what they want to do.
I, I personally think that we should, uh, go ahead and approve it. And then if the city wants to give us a discount, then we leave that up to the city and it's put in the. and it's put in the plate before we sign the memorandum, memorandum of agreement. But I think as a school board, we have to make a decision to do what we think is best, and if the city wants to help us out, it's left up to the city to decide that. And that'd be their council saying, "Yep, we're not gonna charge them that much, we're gonna give them a discount and give them a rate."
Too ambiguous for me.
Doc Brinson, um, do you have a recommendation on this issue?
Do I have a recommendation? If we want the resource officer, which I think we do, then, you know, we can accept that, uh, proposal. There is no other option, otherwise you don't have a resource officer, that's what I thought.
Um, make a motion to accept the offer from the City of Jessup to provide a resource officer.
Are we gonna provide one or two resource officers?
I think we start with one, but that'd be my recommendation.
And I said the hundred and ten thousand dollar.
You're right.
So we would start with one and continue to contract our services for the rest of our things. That sounds, that's the motion. So we are making a motion to accept one officer, including the card, that hundred and ten thousand dollars, and we would continue to contract services for athletic events and other extracurricular activities.
That's correct.
Have a second for the motion.
Second.
Moved in second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Daniel?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, last item was, uh, Montheroll Smith sidewalks.
Um, the city, um, is, um, they're willing to, uh, put the sidewalks down, but we must, uh, continue the sidewalk from the, uh, Fourth Street Extension Road all the way up to the bus ramp. And they just wanna make sure that, uh, that is gonna be done. Uh, I was told that the way it's gonna, uh, be laid out, they had the, uh, city engineer to come in, and they will continue the sidewalk from Boston Street just beyond, um, the Bennett's house. Once it gets to the Bennett's house, they, uh, just beyond it, they will put a crosswalk there along with the little flashing lights, is what they were saying, that the kids can push the button, and they will be able to walk across the street at that point. Then the sidewalk will continue on up to, um, the Montheroll Smith area, where at, at which point, we would need to tie in to have, uh, the sidewalk to go on up to the bus ramp, which will enable kids to be able to get to school, uh, safely and, uh, without having to play frogger and dodge and guards. Um, they, which, this is not gonna happen. Uh, they were asking us to, uh, maybe see what the, uh, county could do as far as the roads were concerned. Um, they said even though given the situation they're in, that they still also already have money that are allocated for, uh, road improvements, and because even though the school, that road is in the city, it is also county property and people pay, uh, county taxes, uh, that live within the city limits. So they was just asking to see whether or not we could get assistance with the turning lane, is what they were asking about, that particular project. But they were also saying that they did, uh, previously had that money allocated when the school was being built, and that they were told once again that, um, you know, that, uh, we didn't want it, because we wanted kids to, uh, ride the bus to school. Um, and as you know, that you can't make a kid ride the bus to school, then sometimes kids miss, may miss the bus. Momma gonna tell you, "You gotta get to, you better get to school," I, you know, I bet I come out by this house and you're in this house. So that kid will have to walk to school. So we're just trying to make sure that they have a safe route on a daily basis, you know, to, uh, get to school. And that's basically it, they are also in, um, they said they're also in the progress of putting up the signage so that there's the, uh, school zone signage there that will slow people down, because people speed up and down that road at the time, and they don't have the ability to give a speeding ticket, because there's no school signage. So they're, they're in the, uh, process of, uh, doing that. And as I said before, um, the mayor is actually the one who brought to my attention that we did not have any, or there is no school signage there.
Let, let me, let me comment on, on this, this issue, since it's continued to come up over the last several months. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that I've had absolutely zero conversations with any council member or, or even the mayor on the issue for sidewalks. I was asked if, are, are, are y'all gonna put a crosswalk in and, and have, or do you think people's gonna use those, uh, sidewalks to go to school? Answer that is, no, I don't think there's gonna be very many of them. That was the conversations I had about that issue. We don't dictate, we don't get to control what goes on in the, in the city, we, we don't, we don't get to put sidewalks down, down those roads, that's not an acceptable expenditure for us. Um, you know, I've always said we could put, you know, some sidewalks, if they decide to do something, we'll, we'll run it from the road. Um, the, the initial discussion was, if we run them, we gonna run them here, y'all need to have a, a crossing guard, we'll put a cross, and they're gonna cross right there at the, where the house is, right there with the bus loop is, that was, that was the initial conversation I had, I said, "Well, y'all do them?" Yes, we'll run them up the bus loop, which ain't the safest thing, but it'll be.
Yeah, they don't wanna put it right there.
Yeah, but if, it, I mean, we, it's doable, we will certainly do that part. Um, but, you know, we, we don't control, uh, I mean, I'm pretty sure the city knew when we're building the schools, I, I, I'm not aware of any, any process where we have to, uh, require turning lanes, signals, signage, and that sort of that, that's, that's totally a city thing. Always starts, that's not something that, that even manages the school system.
Yeah, but you know, yeah, we manage the school system, but those are our kids that are going to that school, so, uh, what we need to make sure we're doing in, in the event that we ever have to build another school, another facility. And I, they agreed with me, and, you know, I don't point fingers, I said, "We, as entities, as governmental entities of the county of Wayne, need to come together and work together and communicate better with each other when we're doing something." Because, you know, uh, like I said, we're going on two years in this school and, uh, there's no signage up? You know, that, that, that is just, uh, that's pretty much irresponsible. You know, on both our parts and the city part, you know, we both take responsibility in that.
Oh, yeah.
We, we can't throw it off on, on the city, when we are the educational, uh, entity here. We should have been aware or been more, uh, observant that, "Oh, wow, there are no school zone signs up here." So we're, we're just as responsible as they are when it comes to that.
I have a question, um, how that Arthur Williams and Jessup don't reach, 'cause I, I just like, just think about it, I go by it at least two or three, four, five times a day. Um, that signage and that turning lane and that stuff that was put out there, who paid for that, do we know? I mean, I don't, I wasn't on the board when that school was built. The state did that.
That's the state rock, too.
Yeah, the state did that, it was state.
Sidewalk, Arthur Williams, who did that?
That one's been there forever.
I don't know, which, I don't even know.
It's not a, it's not a sidewalk.
Yeah, it doesn't go all the way down, I know what you're talking about, that sidewalk's been there since I was a little girl, before Arthur Williams even got there.
That was on the city, city side of things, but it doesn't go all the way down, it stops right there.
Does it go into Jessup Elementary, the sidewalk?
It stops right at, um, Barjones.
With Joey's and.
Yeah, it stops right, it stops right there. Uh, there used to be some apartments up in that area.
We knew, you know, who, uh, who was responsible for putting the signs up and the lights.
Yeah, the state did all, all that, and that.
That's the state rock, well, yeah, state rock. So are we going to, uh, vote on that we are going to, uh, extend that sidewalk, because that's what the city's needing? From, I make a motion that we, uh.
When are they starting their, their projects as far as their stop sign and turning lanes and stuff?
I think they're waiting on that stuff to come in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they're waiting on that to come in.
Where's the sidewalk? It'll be on school property.
No, their sidewalk, our sidewalk, that we're voting on, is gonna be on school property. It's gonna start from the edge of the road, it's just kinda ridiculous. Isn't it a spinster?
I don't know how much money it is, I mean, I think it would be just regular M and O type amounts, but I mean, if it's some inordinate amount, I, but I will check it and price it and let you know if it's. I think it's gonna be a hundred bucks a dollar or anything, might be something we handle in-house just out of maintenance operations, and that's, that's day-to-day normal stuff that we just do.
Do you really need our approval to, to hook a sidewalk on our school property, to get it to, for a sidewalk to go on school property?
They just need to know that that's what we're going to do, it, it's not an if, ands, buts, you know, maybe that it is a definitive, that we are going to fulfill that obligation to do that.
I said it the whole time, but, you know, y'all document it, take some action, and where you can have it to show.
I like to document it.
And that sort of, yeah, let's vote it, put it in the minutes, and that way you got.
I'll make a motion to, to extend that sidewalk on school property to, to join the future sidewalk.
I say that motion.
Moving in second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes, ma'am. Moving into executive session, discuss deliberative on the employment, employment, compensation, hiring, disbring, action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation of rating of a public officer or to interview applicants for a position as superintendent, motion for executive session.
Can I move?
Second.
Moving in second. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I had a good class. I said, "Yeah, I'm from the police, the police has a good classroom management." I said, "Y'all don't do that, 'cause I'm gonna tell you."
Make a motion, return to regular session.
I so moved.
Move in second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes, ma'am.
Personnel recommendations for August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, certified resignations, Mark Perry, Wayne County High School. Classified recommendations, Julia Bartlett, Montheroll Smith Elementary. Classified resignations, uh, this is Marley, Garcia Central Office, and Barbara Robinson, Jessup Elementary. Motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation.
I say, "Move."
Second.
Moving in second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Sutton?
Uh, don't have it.
I need a nap.
All right.
That's it.
I'm good.
Good. Turn back.
My family, see, I don't go to sleep, see, I take naps, 'cause they see me on Facebook one or two in the morning. But I'm going to sleep at night.